Board members, there is no chair or voice chair to preside over this meeting. I will now entertain a motion to seek the appointment of a voting board member to preside over the meeting until such time as the election of officers take place. I will need a motion and a second. Is there a motion?
I move that we ask Mary Washington to start the meeting and preside until such time as we turn it to the Secretary Treasurer to call for a vote for Chair and Vice Chair.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, fantastic. Mrs. Washington, the meeting is yours.
Thank you. This meeting will now come to order, and I need a motion to enter into executive session. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move the board enter executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues, and student issues, Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we will enter into executive session. The meeting will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
It is my great pleasure to introduce our two board members. To my right, Mrs. Karen Bailey, and next to Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Rita Weaver. Would you please give them a round of applause? In our audience, we have special guests, Faith Abernathy, Sees McPresident, Anna Loughlin Easement President. Thank you for being in attendance. Is there a motion to temporarily suspend the rules and have the Secretary Treasurer preside over the meeting for the purpose of election of officers?
I, I, sorry, I move to temporarily suspend the rules and to ask the Secretary Treasurer to preside over the meeting for the election of officers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Smith will now preside over the meeting for the purpose of election of officers.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Washington. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Chairman.
I move that Ms. Karen Bailey be Chairman of the Board of Education.
I second it.
Discussion?
I, I, I think it's wonderful. I think it's, it's a bit ambitious since you're completely new and haven't been here. I, you know, just a function of transparency, I wish, since it seems like this has been a conversation, that I had been included in that, but, you know, I certainly can support this.
Mrs. Bailey, do you accept the nomination for Chairman?
I do.
At this point, all in favor of Mrs. Karen Bailey as the Chairman, signify by raising your hand. We have unanimous vote. Ms. Bailey, congratulations.
Congratulations.
You are the Chairman. The floor is now open for nomination for the office of Vice Chairman. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Ms. Rita Weaver for Vice Chairman.
Ms. Weaver, do you accept the nomination for Vice Chairman?
Yes, I do.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of Ms. Discussion?
Are there any other nominations?
Discussion?
I would ask Mary if she would be willing to, to rise to this. My concern, and, and, you know, if I had been given the opportunity, if I had known this was gonna happen, I certainly would have shared it earlier, but in the, again, interest of openness, based on the various things that are going to be coming before the board this year, I think it would be a really good idea to have someone with experience as part of that leadership team. And, you know, Mary's been on the board a long time. She is well-versed in what we do, how we do it, and also very open to other opportunities to, to discuss. So, I, I would, and the fact that there are still some outstanding legal issues with respect that Mrs. Weaver is a part of, I'm just a little uncomfortable with, with that. So, that's my thought.
There's a nomination for Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Washington, are you interested in the position of Vice Chair? Would you accept the nomination?
I appreciate Mrs. Allen's support for me, but I decline the nomination. I think Ms. Bailey and Mrs. Weaver were doing excellent job working together as a team. I was the Chairman of the Board of Education in 1996, and I was, I was new, and it was a new board, and we did a wonderful job. The Board of County Commissioners, they have five new members, and they have a president who has never been president before, and we all put the students first, and I think we're gonna work together harmoniously and collaboratively to do what's best for students. And that's why we're all here, and the campaign is over, and we're gonna roll up our sleeves and get to work on behalf of the students of St. Mary's County. But I do appreciate your support of me, and I appreciate all my board members, so I think it's time for us to just move on.
We have a nomination for Ms. Rita Weaver as Vice Chairman of the Board of Education. All in favor of Ms. Weaver being the office of Vice Chairman, please signify by raising your hand. We have four. Congratulations, Mrs. Weaver.
And, and I mean no disrespect, and I look forward to working with both of you, but based on my, what I've shared, I will, I believe, vote no for this. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to return to regular rules with Ms. Karen Bailey assuming the duties?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And at this point, I then turn it back over to, and turn it over to Ms. Bailey. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is item number five, Approval of the Agenda. Right now, I'm seeking a motion to approve the agenda from the last, or approve the agenda for this meeting, excuse me. Getting ahead of myself.
I move to approve the agenda with the following change, that we amend the agenda to remove Action Item 12.03, Temporary Construction Easement Walkway Evergreen Elementary School for further review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for a vote? Or any, oh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries with the amendment that Mrs. Allen proposed. Moving on to item number six, Board Reports. You want to start with, Sarita?
Yes, thank you. Just an update about my drug summit planning committee regarding the students. A question that myself, as well as other students, had from our last drug summit planning meeting, is do we want to split up responsibilities of planning the drug summit based on personal student interest or based on an overall school interest? Based on personal student interest, the good part about that is that every student would be more engaged in their topic, but overall student interest would be more convenient for meeting and making those decisions. And we came up with a solution to base up, to split up based on school interest, but to have additional meetings as a whole planning committee where everyone can contribute to subcommittee ideas. So, based on that, with our progress, the individual high schools have been generating ideas on their topic of subcommittee in preparation for our next collective meeting where everyone will be able to contribute to all of the different subcommittees. Thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
Yes, I went to the Madrigal Dinner at Chopticon. The food was great, the singing was lovely. They had a choir director, or one that filled in for Ms. Lovick because she's had a baby, and the lady that filled in for her was a former student from Chopticon, and right now she's teaching in Ohio and wishes she can get back to St. Mary's County. But let me tell you, this lady was up there singing, and I looked, and I thought, she's like a professional singer. And she was one of ours, she was our choir director. Boy, could she, she was a little thing, but boy, could the music come out, and it was just a wonderful thing. I bought a lovely wreath and an ornament that says Chopticon's 50th Anniversary. And I was there in nineteen, actually seventy, and I had my first baby right after that, but I wasn't there in time for the beginning of the 50 years. But Chopticon's changed all in 50 years, but it's still, it's a good school. So, anyway, I had a wonderful time.
Mrs. Weaver?
I, along with Karen Bailey, went up to the MAE orientation for new school board members. It was packed with information from eight in the morning till seven thirty at night. It was well worth attending, a lot of great information, and, you know, look forward to being able to use that now, the knowledge.
Okay, for myself, we rushed home from the MAE conference and attended the Letty Marshall Dent Gingerbread Auction, which some of you might have read about in the paper. The fifth grade and second grade students team up with their reading buddies, make gingerbread houses, and then they auction them off for charity. So, this year, they raised a little over $2,700, and their selected charity was the Fairy Godmother Project, which supports children with cancer, and also any of the needy families that are within our, our school system. Mrs. Washington?
I attended the Global International Studies Catstone Project back in October, but I didn't have a chance to talk about it. And so, I'm gonna take this time to give a shout-out to Lenartown High School and the people who are involved with the Global International Studies Catstone Projects. Denise Mandis is the GIS Lead and teaches English. Colleen Gill also teaches English. Mr. Denny works with the seniors, developing their presentations for the first day of school until they are Catstone Projects. Tracy Harding works with juniors and begins the process. Brenda Hager, the media specialist, works with source development and product development. Adam Cropper and Brian, Brines teach underclassmen history, so many people. Bruce Henderson works with the sophomores. Susan Taylor is the counselor assigned to them, and Deborah Denny is the VP associated with GIS. So, as you can see, it takes a lot of people to make the GIS program successful and challenging for our students. And here are some of the projects that were presented. Human rights, the spoken word, and one on discrimination, which I stopped by, it was very interesting. And the student said, instead of favoring one minority group over a majority group, he suggested that there be training programs provided free and offered by the employer so everyone who desires can get an opportunity to successfully compete and qualify for employment. I thought that was really great. The Greek Economic Crisis. One of the students went to Greece over the summer, and he did a work-study job in the area of finance. He said the economic crisis in Greece was similar to the one in America with the real estate downturn, and it would take about 25 years for the economy to truly recover. He saw areas in which the economy was improving in Greece, but it was slowly but gradually improving. They talked about gender bias, adult literacy, alcohol abuse, and the US and China with the power projections. The student showed that the United States will fall behind in military power if China continues to increase their numbers of warplanes, submarines, and carriers by 2030. So, he said, we have a lot of work to do in the United States to keep up with China. Then it was another one on human trafficking, and it was on one in Southern Maryland, and the student defined what is human trafficking? She said it is the illegal movement of people, typically for the purposes of forced labor or commercial sexual exploitation through fraud or coercion. It is a modern-day form of slavery that includes men, women, boys, and girls. Another student talked about human trafficking in Southern Maryland, in St. Mary's County. It exists here. Also, looking at the map of the United States, it forms a U-state, a U-shape, from Southern California through Mexico, Texas, Florida, and up through the southeastern states. Another student talked about the fate of wild horses. Wild horses are prevalent in the Midwest, and citizens are bothered and by their encroachment on their land. So, the student suggested, just give the horses birth control, and then, and then, you know, they can roam freely, and it won't be so many of them. And she said that would be easier than them damaging property, just corral them and give them birth control. So, I said, that's, that's good. So, many of the students not only presented their projects, but also went the next step by contacting their elected officials in the Senate and the House, what solutions for their problems? The event lasted from six to eight PM, but I had an opportunity to dialogue with several of the students on their outstanding projects. So, based on what I saw, our students are collaborators, they are thinkers, they are problem solvers, and I think the world will be in better shape because of our students. So, we're in good hands, and when you visit the schools and you see the wonderful work that our students are doing, our teachers, our support staff, the community, everybody's working hard so that we can have productive students who contribute to society versus taking away from society. And I want to thank our interim Superintendent, Mr. Scott Smith, who's working diligently to keep us moving forward to increase that graduation rate.
Absolutely.
From, what is it?
Ninety-one point three. It'll be, we just wait, you just wait. January's gonna be a banner month when we break.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, and our students are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen.
Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Washington, and I took the time to go and visit the Forest Center on Monday evening. It was the grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony of what's known as the Hive. It is the new home of First Team 836, the RoboBees, an award-winning, internationally-known robotics team that has been incredibly successful. One of the things, the many things that I really love about this particular outlet for students is that it is not confined merely to the students who are in public school. It is open to homeschool students, it is open to private and parochial students, as well as public school students. And there are several different levels in which students can compete. So, there were students there as young as nine years old, up through seniors in high school. And, and in fact, I hadn't realized that it is not even confined to St. Mary's area, but lovely young lady who is a homeschooled senior from Prince George's County, is the head of the RoboBees, and beautiful young lady who was incredibly well-spoken and really shared the, the core of what the RoboBees are and, and what it has taken for them to be able to compete at the levels which they are competing. And, and they are very successful, and they are trying to work themselves into this new space that they're in. They still have, have work orders, and I guess to get shelving up and, and 220 current to be able to get to, to them.
Make the Hive everything the Hive needs to be.
Exactly, exactly. So, and, and my hat also goes off to the adult mentors who are there with them, engineers from across the spectrum, many of whom are associated with the base, put in an incredible amount of time and energy to mentor these students, to work with them, and, and they, they, you know, for that, they, they get paid in probably pizza and, and thanks.
It's an emotional reward.
It is, it truly is. They, they do it as a labor of love, not, not because they are compensated, because unfortunately, they are not. But I, I was concerned when Mr. Button Bond from the Tech Center retired this past year that, that there was going to be a, a challenge to find people who would be willing to step up and, and serve as the responsible parties for the RoboBees, and thankfully, two gentlemen did step up, and, and it really is a function of their passion, and I, I think we had a really good time. The students all took the time to share with us what, what they were doing and why they were excited about it.
Right. I think Mr. Jarboe was there as well, which was, which was good support from the county commissioners, and he was, he spent a lot of time there also.
Yes, he did. So, thank you for, for saying that. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. The Superintendent report.
Oh, thank you. And to follow on with Mrs. Washington, we're talking about productive students. In our conversations in the last few months, we've been talking about health, health concerns, Ebola, and so forth. It was brought to my attention that a gentleman by the name of Dr. Jerome Michael Adams, a Chopticon High School graduate of 1992, has just recently been named the Indiana State Health Commissioner. Only the second African-American to hold that post, doing fantastic and incredibly important work, and so our students continue to make us proud all across the United States. So, very much appreciated to Dr. Adams, son of Richard, Richard Adams and Adrena Adams of Mechanicsville. So, our contribution to St. Mary's County to the larger well-being and health of Indiana and the, and the state as we know. I've attended several things relative to the Interagency Committee on School Construction. We've, we appealed, we're seeking more funds. Was at the Capital Improvement Budget and Work Session with the county commissioners yesterday, two days ago. Fantastic. I have been out in classrooms. I just recently went to see Mrs. Harris, a fourth-grade teacher at Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School, as she was, seen a lot of traditional classes, and this classroom was, she was doing interventions, reading interventions with fourth-grade students, and she was doing days, and then the second part was visualize and verbalize the way that they, the way that we help students not only read, but construct meaning and retain meaning from words. It is, it's, it's incredible work, and we can see that we really are on the right track with not only talented students and incredibly gifted teachers, but also with the right research-based interventions consistently applied throughout the system. So, that was really, that was really great. This is the season for application to colleges and universities, and I'd like to, I'd like to do a little shout-out and say how much, they don't, they don't hear it nearly enough, but all of our teachers, and all of our counselors, and administrators, and perhaps even board chairs and interim super, we are all asked to write letters of recommendations for our children to help them secure the very best post-secondary placement that they can, and it really is, it's a, it's, it's a big request, and it's done so with compassion by our teachers and our counselors and all these others to, to, to write letters of recommendation. Specifically, it's been, it came across my desk, at Lenartown High School, so far this year, they have five presidential nominations to the United States Naval Academy. They already have five students who are gonna be appointed to the Naval Academy. It is, it's, it's unheard, it's unheard of. So, I just wanna, I wanna read their names, and hopefully that sparks everybody. Let's get those applications in. I have a senior. Daniel Buckley, Tisonia Gorik, Ruthie Hornbuckle, Emma Scott, Casey Miller. They've already, they've already earned the nomination to the United States Naval Academy. So, that just is exceptional. There are five more students who are waiting to hear as well. So, what a hotbed of fantastic things that are, that are happening with our schools and with our students. We are truly exceptionally blessed to have all of these wonderful people working together. And I will end with the November Work Hard and Be Nice Award recipients. They are Todd Burrows, Tyler Duncan, Rick Hagaman, and Carol Lowmiller. Happy holidays to all. Thank you very much. And at this point, I return it to the new chair, Ms. Bailey. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you. The next agenda item, recognitions, there is none. Public hearing. Sandra, have we had anyone sign up for public hearing or public comment?
There is no public hearing. We have had people sign up for public comment.
Okay, all right. Then I'm going to read the public comment statement before we begin. "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The Board takes this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the Superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the Board sits as an appellate body in both the student and employee appeals. The Board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. The Board encourages speakers to present written statements to the Board Secretary, who will distribute copies to all Board members." Cindy Wilson?
You can still talk. Yeah, I can still talk. Hi, good morning. I'm a retired teacher in St. Mary's County for 30 years. Worked with Marilyn for 16 of those years. I've known her for, for 18 because we worked together. She's a dedicated friend, special education teacher. She was, I know her as a parent, and now a Board of Education member. During the period that I worked with Marilyn, I personally witnessed Mrs. Crosby advocate for teachers, for paraeducators, for building service workers, secretaries, parents, her constituents, and even for other board members. But most importantly, she was an advocate for children. She has always gone the extra mile above and beyond the call of duty to help and to support them. So, let's put children first. Let's stop wasting taxpayers' hard-earned money trying to deframe a champion of children, Mrs. Marilyn Crosby. Unfortunately, three members of the former Board of Education voted to remove Mrs. Crosby from her seat. To me, this is a travesty. It was due to a petty power struggle, and in an attempt to do what was best for the children and the educational system, without the thought of herself, Mrs. Crosby has faced revenge for this ever since. In 2012, she received 64% of the public's vote that helped her win the, the election to become a member of the Board of Education. She was, and still is, known for her honesty, her trustworthiness, and of her great integrity. She was and still is known for her honesty, her trustworthiness, and her great integrity. A quick glance at the case against Mrs. Crosby reveals, without a shadow of a doubt, just how slanted the findings are. I also understand that the results from the investigation were stated to be circumstantial. I repeat, circumstantial, which means inconclusive. No proof. Not proven beyond a shadow of a doubt. I will offer you a solution or two to solve this problem. Number one, stop the legal suit against Mrs. Crosby. Number two, stop trying to unseat Mrs. Crosby from the Board of Education. Number three, admit that this wish to unseat Mrs. Crosby was terribly wrong and unprofessional. Number four, restore Mrs. Crosby's reputation. And number five, apologize to Mrs. Crosby's husband, children, and grandchildren for the pain and embarrassment you have caused them throughout the grueling ordeal. And most importantly, apologize to Marilyn, an incredible advocate for all, especially children. Please resend the poor and unjust decision of the previous Board members to unseat Mrs. Crosby.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Shirley Banner?
Good morning and thank you for this opportunity to address both the people that are here in support of Marilyn Crosby and to the school board. I am a retired teacher also. Started out in Alexandria, Virginia schools, moved overseas for several years, then came back to Houston, Texas. In all the years where I retired, in all the years that I've been teaching, there were a few teachers that really stood out as being pro-student. And Marilyn Crosby is on the top of that list that I have. I know she is pro-student. She wants what's best for all the students and for the school system. I ask that the Board rescind this resolution to have Marilyn removed from the school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom Crosby?
Thanks. Good morning. My name is Tom Crosby, so you should know how this is going to go. First, I would like to congratulate the new members of the Board and remind them that they were elected because of the voters' absolute disgust with the previous Board. You were elected in part because the voters repudiated the practices of the former Board whose operations and their relationship with the former superintendent was a strange combination of Stockholm syndrome and go along to get along. Before I address the specific case against Marilyn, I'd like to discuss the background behind these allegations. There was for years a campaign against anyone who would dare to stand up to the previous Board leadership and the previous superintendent, including anything as simple as asking a question. Last spring, Marilyn asked for a copy of the previous superintendent's contract, which by the way, she had signed. After some drama, she received a copy as well as the required retaliation. During the $6 million budget crisis, she repeatedly asked for a copy of the original healthcare estimate. She did not receive, when she did not receive it, she abstained from a vote, much to the shock and amazement of the Board leadership and the superintendent, followed shortly thereafter by a normal retaliation. Later, she received a copy, she requested a copy of the superintendent's leave balance from the former Board Chairman. This request was rejected and a normal retaliation followed. The current charge against Marilyn is retaliation for her not going along with the attempt by the former superintendent and the former Board leadership to appoint the superintendent's handpicked successor without any open competition. If you examine the details of the supposedly independent investigation, you will see a compilation of hearsay evidence, twisted logic, and blatant lies. The October 29th resolution that was supposedly based on the investigation does not match the details of the investigation. Mr. Raspe's letter to the state superintendent misrepresents both the investigation and the October 29th resolution and includes information that is a total lie. I suspect that this letter was prepared without any legal review. This was the last gasp of a lame duck. You, the new Board, have now inherited this mess. Reportedly, the investigation has cost approximately $20,000. I believe this figure is low and does not include the cost of the efforts of the superintendent's lawyers to orchestrate this entire affair. To help you put this in perspective, $20,000 could be used to purchase about 650 cases of copy paper. This would be 38 cases of paper for every elementary school in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby.
Please rescind this mess.
George Clark?
That was not here, I guess. The doctor's in, was he?
He must not be present.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the list?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, next agenda item is the consent agenda. And this includes several items. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I need help.
Next item on the agenda is policy BEC.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everything, okay?
You're good, you're good.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I said, you're good. You're doing great.
See, it's like the first day of school for everyone, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Only mine is in December. Okay, so the next item is the action item, which is the policy, the second reading, the BEC policy. Mr. Ed Omealy?
Good morning, Board members. The initial reason for the amendment to BEC was due to the recodification of two laws that provide for open meetings and executive sessions. In St. Mary's County, we operate both under the State Open Meetings Act and the St. Mary's County Open Meetings Act. The State Open Meetings Act was recodified out of the state government article and was placed into the general provisions article during the past session of the General Assembly. And the St. Mary's County Open Meetings Act was recodified to the newly created local government article, also during the last session of the Maryland General Assembly. And so it was important that we have the correct statutory references and that we make any changes to our policy consistent with the newly codified provisions in the law. And that's essentially what we did. We did clean up a few things. So for example, references to the Board Attorney were changed to refer to legal counsel. But by and large, the policy simply reflects the current practices that we've had in place for a number of years. And so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
I have a few questions and concerns. Under A, it says authorized, it says a public agency or a staff meeting. Can you clarify, public agency?
Well, certainly, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County is a state agency and it is subject to the provisions of the State Open Meetings Act and the St. Mary's County Open Meetings Act. Under the State Open Meetings Act, staff meetings would not be subject to the Open Meetings Act, but they are subject to the St. Mary's Open Meetings Act. So the agency is the Board of Education of St. Mary's County. Staff would be the meetings of the superintendent, the superintendent's cabinet, the superintendent's staff, as they may exist from time to time on various topics. So we've had members of the public who've sought access to various staff meetings and they have been welcomed.
So then, instead of stating public agency, because that could encompass other areas, can we change the wording to say the Board of Education?
We could. The Board of Education is the only public agency that's reflected under the policy. The language that we used was the statutory language. But we could certainly strike in A where it says authorized, a public agency meeting to reflect a Board of Education meeting. That would certainly be something that we could do. It's the same thing, but this might be clearer.
Right, I just have concerns like, because it could encompass someone else. So I wanted to clarify that when we are doing this, this is, the public agency is the Board of Education.
That's correct.
So that's what, I mean, I would like to see that wording there in place.
I think it's a good idea.
I do have other questions, concerns. Later on, it states in 10, item two, it says, "Discuss specific students, family, or personnel, and the disclosure of the discussions could prove detrimental or harmful to those individuals." I would like to know who determines what is detrimental and what is harmful.
Well, the easiest example would be when the Board meets to consider a student discipline appeal under section 7-305 of the education article. That would be subject to the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. The Board, sitting in its quasi-judicial capacity, would make a decision to uphold, to modify, or to reverse the decision of the superintendent. That would be an example. The Board generally does not, except in that capacity, meet for the purpose of deciding student issues, particular to individual students. But in 7-305, the Board has a statutory obligation to do so. And obviously, the public dissemination of the Board's decision on a student discipline matter would, I think, per se, be potentially harmful.
Okay, so what you're saying, it would depend on what the situation is, what we're referring back to then as being detrimental and harmful.
That would be the best example I could give, is what I gave.
And then in B, it says, where you have now, "As deemed appropriate for the conduct of the Board business." What it is, is it says, "The only persons who may attend executive sessions are voting Board members, the superintendent of schools, except when his or her appointment or salary is under consideration, legal counsel, and other individuals as deemed appropriate for the conduct of the Board business." So who is deeming what is appropriate?
Well, the Board and the superintendent would need to make that determination. So for example, the Board will, from time to time, have representatives from finance, from facilities, from human resources in the executive session meeting as the nature of executive session business deems necessary. So for example, if we're hiring new teachers for the upcoming school year, it would be typical for the Director of Human Resources to come and advise the Board in an executive session with respect to those appointments. And that would be an example. That's not something that would occur every meeting, but from time to time as the Board deems appropriate.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Item number, or letter D regarding the training.
Yes.
The two areas which you can receive training is either an online class or offered through the Attorney General or Mako.
That's correct.
Are those outlined specifically in the statute? Or were those included during your review?
I think the requirement for having the training is in the statute. I think the avenues that are available are not specifically designated in the statute. I may be wrong on that. I would double check. But those are certainly avenues that we do have available through Mako, through the AG's office.
Okay, because I would just suggest, because the Association of School Boards, MAE, also.
Yes, yes, they do.
So if that's probably something that might be easier for us to, you know, to add in there
and include that as an option. That would be an excellent suggestion.
That's our counterpart to Mako, basically.
Yes, indeed.
The only thing I would ask is just to look at the statute.
Right.
If this language comes specifically from the statute and MAE is not included there, that could be problematic. But if there's language in the statute that allows for this, then I would think that was quite appropriate.
Right, I would agree.
Yeah, I think the MAE training is generally utilized by many of the Boards.
Okay.
So to clarify, you will look at changing the public agency to the Board of Education and then looking into the MAE training to see if that we can use that, is that correct?
Yes, and with respect to changing to the public, from the public agency to the Board, the Board could vote on that amendment if they choose to right now. It's a pretty minor amendment. I will double check with respect to whether we can add MAE to the list of possible training venues.
Could you put public agency down in the definitions? Would that be more appropriate, since you took that straight from the law? And define what it is under definitions, under definitions you have non-applicable?
I think Mrs. Weaver's suggestion is a very clear suggestion.
It's the same thing, just a different way of doing it.
Yes, I think it's a very clear suggestion.
Okay, so do we have, oh, do you have a question?
I appreciate that you've added the portion about the training that's required. I know that that's something that was added after the fact. And that training is open to anyone. It was a two and a half hour class. It really did take the two and a half hours.
I go tomorrow.
I did it online, in addition to the MAE one. But it was very interesting. So, you know, the challenge really is that the St. Mary's ordinance is much tighter than the rest of the state. So you'll find that they spend a lot of time saying, "Except in St. Mary's, except in St. Mary's." But thank you. I appreciate that you've done this and I agree with the changes that have been suggested.
Any other comments, Mrs. Crosby?
I remember talking about this once in the boardroom. And I believe when we were talking about it, we were talking about one person and one person has to receive training. Is that correct? But are we talking about?
It says at least one individual.
Is it that how we're, I'm inferring that right now.
It's a good idea for everybody to be trained, but the.
The law says.
But the law says that the compliance board has to be notified of one person who has taken the training.
I was just wondering if I had understood that correctly.
It says at least one, so it can be more than one.
Thank you.
Anything more?
No more comments.
Okay, Mrs. Washington?
No, I'm fine.
Mrs. Allen?
That's good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so. Do you want to, how do you want to proceed? Next item is the reappointment.
Oh, we need a motion.
We need a motion to whether either accept the changes with the change in public agency to the Board of Education and table the issue about looking into the requirement of the statute for the specific, you know, for the specific training requirement.
Do we want to table it or do we want to ask that it be done and that if allowed, that that language be inserted, then that could go forward?
That is another great suggestion.
So what would?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, then I move that the Board of Education approve policy BEC as amended with respect to changing Board of Education, public agency to Board of Education, and that Mr. Omealy determine. and that Mr. Omealy determine the language on available training for the Open Meetings Act and correct that as per statute and discussion.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. I'll have to take my notes first, to make sure I don't miss anything. Okay, the next item is also Mr. Omealy. Reappointment of St. Mary's County Public Schools Ethics Panel members.
Thank you, Board members. When the Board put in place a few years ago its ethics regulations, and it seems like it was just the other day that we did so, we staggered the appointments of the initial ethics panel members. And if you look in our regulation BCAR, it says that the five members of the panel will have staggered terms initially. Two members shall have a three-year term, and three members shall have a two-year term. And the terms for two of our members have approached the end of their duration, and both have consented to being reappointed for another three-year term. And those individuals are Mr. Patrick Murphy and Ms. Bernadette Lewis. And so, the Board needs to make a decision with respect to their reappointment.
Any Board discussion or comment? Mrs. Crosby?
No, they did a good job. They said I didn't do anything wrong.
Mrs. Weaver?
No, no comments.
Two times.
Mrs. Washington?
No comments.
Mrs. Allen?
No questions or comments?
Okay, thank you. Then I am seeking a motion to reappoint the two ethics panel members that Mr. Omealy outlined.
I move to approve the reappointment of two St. Mary's County Public Ethics Panel members as presented, Patrick Murphy and Bernadette Lewis.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is the Local Capital Improvement Program. Mr. Brad Clements and Ms. Kimberly Howe.
Good morning, Board members.
Good morning.
The, for you today is our Local Capital Improvements Program. And we, as Mr. Smith said, we were with the Board of Commissioners on Monday, with the Board of County Commissioners on Monday, as they're just starting the FY16 Capital Improvements Program. We've been in ours for some time, because part of our funding is from the state and part from local. And we have to go in for our state funding by October of each year. So, we have to go into the state by October for our request. So, the Board of County Commissioners ask us to bring our local CIP there in October, usually it's in September. So, they have a picture of the whole program as they're providing the support for our capital program. The, okay. So, so the Local Capital Improvements Program, they've reviewed, when we were there on Monday, incorporated into their documents they were looking at was already our program as viewed by, and approved by the Board back in September. However, it's before you today, Ms. Howe, go through that. We also have, we have our official enrollment, and then we have our new projections, which I think you provided, got a draft of those, as Ms. Howe's finishing them. So, we use those also against our program of what we're asking for. Our capital program, for years, was based on renovation, modernization, and expansion. And so, through that, we were able to meet our capacity needs in little bits, and that's sort of the same way our enrollment comes in. We come in at 200 or 300 a year, and by renovating, we were able to add 200 and 300 seats to every building and renovate and modernize. And that was an approach that the state was taking as well for a number of years. So, through that, we did a number of our schools, we did 12 of our schools renovated and all. With Spring Ridge under construction now, all of our secondary schools have been modernized, expanded, and some of our elementary schools. But as you'll see in the program, it also takes in roofs, heating and cooling systems and things that way. So, all of our schools are addressed. The big component of the program we've had in place and the, today, is to provide that equity among all of our schools, and really believe that we have that. The other thing that we have done through this plan is our average age of our schools, when we started our renovation program, was 38 years. And now, we're down in the, right around 20 years, or a little less, about 18, of all the average age of our schools, which is really outstanding from where we were. So, with that, I just wanted to touch base on where we've been and sort of where we're going. Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, October 2013 and October 2014, well on its way. Looking for a sort of late spring to be completed, give us time to furnish and work through that. We have an office at Loveville set up in one of the trailers for the principal. Will occupy in January and start working on his staffing and things, the needs of that we need to provide for the school. He'll be there close to Mr. Hardwick, Ms. Howe, and myself, so that we can work through the building, work through the orders of the equipment and things as well. So, that's moving along on schedule as it is. Spring Ridge Middle School, the way it looked in May 2014, October 2014. The front addition and things there are nearing completion. During our problem with the well there, they were able to take time when the students weren't there and actually have cleaned up the entrance and much more. The construction fence is gone. And we're moving towards a January occupancy of the new addition and the STEM classrooms on that, and that's moving well. Then we would go into the cycling through the building of the different phases and all. And the staff at the school is just remarkable, and their support, the fire that happened there, and they're able to deal with that and deal with us and how we get them and kept them in place. And as we're moving through this, Mr. Hardwick and his staff is constantly working with the school. The integrated vision that the division has is truly important, especially in our renovation project, but in all projects, that the maintenance, the operation, and even the IT at this point is all under the one vision to get the building done and all working together. And it has truly been very successful in all of our projects. And that doesn't happen everywheres, that all of those are, elements are talking and working and reviewing during design. So, of course, with not renovating and everything, we have to build new buildings. That hurts us in two ways. If you saw the draft numbers that I sent you, we're like 1,000 seats short at our elementary. Well, Captain Walter Francis Duke will assist in that, but we'll still be over 400 next year, seats short. So, we're constantly looking at land. We've been in search of sites for more than 10 years. So, what we have, we have the E-Lift site is over here, and that's just south of Great Mills Road, an elementary school site, as you can see, the one there top on the right. It is a large piece, about 65 acres. We would be able to do an elementary school. We'd be able to partner with Recreation and Parks, or in the future, needed to do another building there, or possibly even a middle school could fit. That's a long ways down the road. But we'd have the opportunity to have some land, Development District, Water and Sewer Rights. So, that site, Ms. Howe and her staff is proceeding with a review of that and submission to the state. That's moving along. Right below it, St. Mary's Crossing is a property that we've been looking at for a number of years for elementary, middle, and high, whatever we could work out on that. We've had several discussions and even to a contract level with the developer. We're still in discussion on that property, and we'll continue, and maybe something will come through on it. The center one at the bottom is the multi-floral site, property in the northern part of the county for high school, middle school. We've done the feasibility of how it would build out. So, right now, we're still have this property under contract. It'll shortly go out of contract, and we would see if we would need this or not, maybe based on the St. Mary's Crossing property. And then, of course, the, over on this side is the Hayden Farm property here in Leonardtown, in which Captain Walter Francis Duke is cited on the property. And then, the county has also set aside a middle school site on that property as well. So, we have some options that we continue to work with, and as we need new schools, we'll be there. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Howe for a moment. Ms. Howe is the capital planning, and she's going to walk through the process a little bit, and then we'll look at the local CIP once again.
We're catching this right now with the new board, starting in the middle of the process. We actually started this process in July. So, what we thought we would do is kind of give an overview of how we've gotten to the point today of the Local Capital Improvements Program. We start, and as Mr. Clements talked about, it really truly is an integrated process. And the state really recognizes that, and we have a Facilities Planner meeting with my peers every quarter. And the meeting that we'll be having upcoming in January is actually going to be talking about that, and they're going to be highlighting the processes that are exemplary across the state that really do that, that talk about how it's integrated. So, we'll be excited to share our successes that we have. But going back to July, we start with our Educational Facilities Master Plan, and that's a very large document that we've shared with our new board members that really outlines our plan and our goals and our objectives for how we're going to meet our interim and short-term needs, and then our long-term needs through the Capital Improvements Program, projects at Captain Walter Francis Duke. So, that document sets the tone, and it's required by the state. And we have to be in compliance with that document as we proceed on through the rest of the process for the state CIP. Doesn't mean that we can't deviate from it, but they would like to see that the state Capital Improvements Program is in concert with that Educational Facilities Master Plan. And it's full of the demographics that we're going to use to substantiate our projects. And we do that in concert with the Mail and Department of Planning, and we do that in concert with the Department of Land Use and Growth Management with a lot of data support. From that document, we very quickly in August come before the Board of Education for approval of our submitted state Capital Improvements Program. And that is a combination of projects that are coordinated with our master plan, but also with a comprehensive maintenance plan that Mr. Widdon, our Director of Maintenance, prepares. He and I and Mr. Hartwick, our Director of Construction, Design and Construction, work closely together. We've built a lot of infrastructure, and we need to maintain that. So, we're going to look at projects that are roof and systemic HVAC projects, and how we coordinate all of those documents together. So, in August, we're going to come before you with the state Capital Improvements projects. And those are only projects that are eligible for state construction. But we do look to the future, because we want to be as cohesive as we can. We do include a local CIP list. Not that point at somewhat draft. We want to go before the Commissioners with that same list in September and give them somewhat of a snapshot of what it's going to look like with the state sort of solidified and the local of what we anticipate it to be. In September, we do present, based on the approval of the Board of Education, a state CIP. We submit it to the Board of County Commissioners in September and ask for their endorsement. We're required by the state to provide a letter of support from the County Commissioners, saying that if the projects were to go forward, they would be supportive of those projects. In October, staff, Mr. Clements and myself, and some of my staff, go before the Public School Construction Program and all of the agencies involved. And we go through our state program in very great detail. We go through every project, past projects that we're currently working on, and we go through our future requests in great detail. It's a very technical overview, and we spend about an hour, a little over an hour, with them going through all of the projects. And what happens is a result of that, in November, we get our first round approval, which we have just recently received. And this year, we have one project in, which is the second year of funding for Spring Ridge Middle School. And what we've received so far, out of the 7.3 million we're asking for, we've received 50%. And that's on par with where we would expect to be. And then, what happens as a result of that, we would have an appeal in December, which Mr. Smith commented on, that he and Mr. Clements attended. And that would be before the Interagency Committee on School Construction. And what we're doing now is we're waiting for that appeal. We've appealed for the remainder of that amount, and any day now, we'll hear that. And what that does, that brings us to where we are today. We've had a work session this week with the Board of County Commissioners to get some direction on the local CIP. And we'll continue on with those work sessions through the remainder of the year. But where we are today is before you with the Local Capital Improvements Program. There's a Capital Improvements Program group that the county has, and it's a director from each one of their department heads, and I sit on that, representing the Board of Education. And we meet together, and we talk about all of our projects and how they work together on a county level. And does a Recreation and Parks project, as Mr. Clements was talking about, the Hayden property, how does that correlate with the project that we're doing? And is there benefit and savings of time and effort and finances to do those projects together? So, that's at a higher level. So, those work sessions will start to happen, and we'll start to have meetings. So, as we approve our local CIP today, if we're successful in doing that, it will go to the Board of County Commissioners in January, and it will then become part of a work session process, where we'll start to get feedback from them of what they're going to consider and what they might like us to look at. We may come back. It'll also go through a work review with the county CIP group, and we'll get some feedback there. So, it becomes an ongoing process through January and February and April as we go through the public hearing process on the local CIP. At the same time, what's going to happen is in January, on January 28th, actually, we'll appeal to the Governor and the Board of Public Works for the state CIP process, and those changes will be incorporated into the local CIP as well. In February through April, we'll just go through work sessions, and we'll hear back from the state on a 75% recommendation, and ultimately to a 90% recommendation on the state. And ultimately, what happens, we get to the end of the budget cycle in May, and we have a recommended final local state and CIP with approval in June. But during this time period, in January, we start with the Educational Facilities Master Plan review, and we'll be starting all over again. So, we'll be running two concurrent CIPs at the same time. The process does start all over for us again in January. So, that is where that schedule goes. In terms of our local CIP request, this is a condensed version of our list, and we've gone to this, we used to have one, we called the Debt Affordability List. And the inherent problem with that one is it only showed the local amount. So, this one does incorporate in the very first column the total amount of the state projects and the total amount of the local projects. But what we're here for today is to talk about our local projects. They're broken out by fiscal year. This is fiscal year 16 through 21. And then, it'll show you the dollar amounts by year that we have for every fiscal year, and showing a balance, because some projects will extend out into fiscal year '22 or '23, based on when they actually start. And if you come down to the bottom, what you'll see is there is a total, and that is how much we're looking for in each fiscal year. And you'll see something called the County Approved Baseline for May of 2013. And that is how much we got approved for these same projects or something similar to these projects last year by the county. And then, you'll see the difference. And what we're comparing to, and this is something that the county uses, is for our FY16 through FY20, because 2021 wasn't in last year's CIP, they were anticipating a certain level of funding. And it compares our request for this year to what we were anticipating last year. And if you look in the column for 2016, last year, they were anticipating us asking for roughly 3.8 million. And this year, with our revisions and what we've looked at in enrollment projections and where we need to be, we're at 3 million. So, we're 830,000 less than where we were last year. And you look the next year, it's 990,000 more, and then 4.8 less, 4.6 more, and 7.6 higher, for a total of 7.6 more. And if you were here for the original portion of the presentation, you'll know that that 7.6 is truly driven by some changes at the state level. Every year, we have a cost per square foot increase, which was significant. And we also had a significant change in our state rated, our state level of participation. We've gone down several years. down several years in the past, but this year, we had a significant 11-point percent drop. And that's based on the county's wealth. So the 7.6 is not something that we made a change. It is just a fact of the fact that state construction's going to cost, construction's going to cost more and the state is participating less. So therefore, the local had to pick that up. The changes in years are based on the fact that we did make a switch. Looking at our enrollment projections, we had Evergreen Elementary School in as our next project. And that was the primary building, which had a capacity of roughly around 366. And that was our next project after Captain Walter Francis Duke. And looking ahead and looking at where our projections needed to be, and as Mr. Clements shared, he shared you with our preliminary projections, we need two schools. And the primary building would only get us half of that. So what we did is we accelerated, in our master plan, we accelerated an additional new school, which is in FY 16, which is listed as this new elementary school, Central County. So those differences in the numbers were the elementary school being accelerated and Evergreen's primary building being shifted out. So that's where you see the dynamics of the shifts of the years of the money. We don't need as much in the beginning and we need more of it in the end. It's the shift of the projects. But going down the projects, in FY 16, Captain Walter Francis Duke, 673,000 is the last portion of the money and that will carry out the completion of the project. And predominantly, what that does is pay for the equipment at the end of the project. Spring Ridge Limited renovation, you'll see that there's no dollars in there for local and that's because the county forward funded the project, which is something that truly afforded us the opportunity to accelerate that project after the fire. So what we're seeking on the state side is the completion of that project. That's our sole state project. The new elementary school, Central County, we'd be looking at $50,000 to get that project started through some ed spec and to get that project truly going and asking for planning approval from the state in FY 17, excuse me. And then that would start the two-year design and construction would begin in FY 19 with the request there. The Qualified Zone and Academy Bond and Aging School Program, you'll see there's small amounts there. That is a state-funded program for aging school and a federally funded program through the state for Qualified Zone Academy. And they don't require matching local dollars, but they do not come with any design funding allowed through the state. So what we started last year and the county was supportive of it, was putting some local design funding in the local CIP so that we could design the projects and not have to look within our operating budget to do that. So they were supportive and we're continuing that process again this year. Site acquisition, last year, as Mr. Clements talked about, we went to the county commissioners and we're talking about some additional land we needed for the high school and the second elementary school. And they were supportive and put in an additional 4.2 or almost 4.3 million last year with the remainder of the 353 in FY 16, which would get us to where we thought we needed to be. We'll have to look at that with the St. Mary's Crossing and to see how that plays out, whether all of those ones would be needed. The Fairlead Academy expansion, we have a very successful program there. Looking to expand upon that, we've looked at that project several different options. And what we've looked at is taking the relocatables, the state relocatables at Spring Ridge Middle School when the project was completed and moving those up to the Fairlead Academy 2 behind the Forest Center and utilizing those at the completion of that to expand that program. And this is what that funding would allow us to do. It allows us to maximize state funding to assist with that project because those relocatables would be state-eligible to be moved. Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School rooftop units, it's a partial replacement. And working in concert with the comprehensive maintenance plan, we don't have to replace all of the units. We can replace partials. So we work very closely to do that. So these would be the partial units that need to be replaced. Same thing with Great Mills High School. We just recently, Mr. Hartwick just completed the track at Lenartown High School and the tennis courts. This would be, the next project would be for Great Mills High School and Chopticon High School and the courts at Esperanza Middle School, the tennis courts. So this is the tennis court component of that. And FY 17 would be the tracks for Great Mills and Chopticon. We split those projects. Relocatables for various schools, you'll see that we have funding for every year of that. That is based on enrollment. We put those in to meet short-term needs at our schools and we evaluate that based on our enrollment projections. And it's to move units within our schools and we evaluate that in the fall of every year and then we try and place those in the spring. So it's based on the need. And we can adjust that to accommodate what we need. Playgrounds, we've had biannual funding for that and we're looking to increase that in '28 to annual funding to try and complete the playground study that we did several years ago. And flooring has been a biannual funding. And what we're looking to do, based on working with Mr. Widdon, we're looking at FY 16 to take that from 50,000 to 65,000 a year based, every other year, based on the amount of work that he needs to complete. Looking to the future, in FY 17, we have some partial roof replacements, some tracks and some site paving, which is additional biannual funding. In '18, we have the HVAC system at Bethune, which is in need of replacement. We have the warehouse expansion. And we have interior basketball scoreboards at three high schools, which have been in. And then FY 19, we have the high school. And that would look to be a possibility of a transitional high school. Mr. Clements talked about the middle school, opening it as a middle school, transitioning through to a high school while it's not on here because it would start in FY 22, would be the middle school. So as soon as the high school completed opening as a high school, we'd have a middle school coming right behind it. We have the Mechanicsville Modernization, which would be one of our last schools that would need to be modernized. We have Evergreen's primary building. Even with the completion of the new elementary school, we would still be short seats. This should meet us for our current projections as we stand now. And then two more systemic renovations, which would be the Green Holly Switchgear and HVAC and a partial roof replacement at Hollywood. Mr. Widdon just did some clear coating on that, the white coating, to try and get us through until we can do the partial replacement. And then Great Mills came in. This year is our FY 21 project, which was the partial roof replacement at Great Mills High School. So our total request for local money is 830,000 less than last year. So it would be 3.3 million, $21,000. So with this approval today, if granted, we would submit the project detail sheets based on this to the commissioners in January for their consideration. That's our presentation.
Just wanted to make sure. Mrs. Crosby, do you have any questions?
No, I don't think I do. Thank you.
Mrs. Weaver?
I do. You talked about moving the relocatables from Spring Ridge Middle School to the Fairlead 2.
Yes.
And you said that would be state-funded. Is that what you said it would be?
It would be state-eligible, which means that the state would pay their share of moving them. And what they do is they say that a relocatable is eligible for, to be moved at $50,000 and then they take their portion of what they would do. So they take their share and at that point, we would be at 63% state-eligible.
Okay, so, because like, the modulars might be moved to another location first and then come there?
These particular relocatables would be staying through the completion of the Spring Ridge Middle School project.
Okay.
And then we've timed it so that at the completion of that project, they would be ready to be moved.
Okay.
And they're of the size and nature that we think would be a good fit for Fairlead Academy.
Give him a minute. Mrs. Washington?
That's fine. Great presentation. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
Recently, at a MAB meeting, there was a significant discussion about the fact that due to the $600 million projected shortfall for the state's budget and the question marks about the incoming governor's budget, that the monies that were initially, that were allocated in the initial round from the state may be the only monies that are allocated for the year. And so if that comes to pass, what is your sense about what will, the impact on our project? I realize those are state dollars, but, and this is the local, but I'm still, would like to understand what that's going to do to us.
Do you want to talk about cash flow?
How much is the shortfall?
The...
And how we would pay for it.
Well, the, you know, in my 40 years, once the state committed, this would be the first time they haven't saw it through, if that's the case. But anything could happen. Right now, we have half of the money.
Right.
And if that's where we were at, there's a couple of things we have in place. One is that the contract allows us, if we don't have funding, to stop the contract, which we wouldn't want to do that because we'd be in the midst of a renovation of the project. But we built that in a number of years ago, so we would have something. We would have to, if this, if we learned in the next week from the appeal that Mr. Smith and I went to, if we learned that we don't get half of the balance of the three, then, you know, I think we would be talking with the county commissioners and letting them know where we stand. That hasn't been a discussion that Dr. Lever has shared, you know, with us and where that would be. And Mrs. Howe was talking about the cash flow. When we go up, that's the main thing we're talking about. They want to know what our cash flow is and they try to meet, you know, they may not give us the 7 million. They're going to look to give us what we need to meet cash flow.
Okay.
And, but to meet cash flow, we need close to that 7 million. We may need, get away with about six and a half or something, but we're going to need close to it. But the answer to your question, we can stop the contract, which we don't want to do and I don't think our Board of Commissioners would do the same. But we would have to go back and visit them. That's our only other two options would be stop the project or seek additional local funds to finish it. Now, if we did have to do that, seek the additional funds, we would still be eligible to get the state funding in the future. And our next year isn't, we're not allocated out real, you know, real high into it. As a county, we're typically getting seven to eight million a year. Now, you know, if change is what you did, that would really reduce. But we would be able to get that money, I think, the following year because we don't have a plan. Many counties have a, you know, we're growing, but we grow 50 to 200 students a year, a little more manageable. Other counties that have big projects right behind them, they wind up sort of never getting their money because there's always a bigger project. If you look at our state, next year, we have a local project, I mean, a state project, but it's not large money. We could still get the additional money repaid to the board. So there are some options.
My understanding from the conversation was that the individual, and I apologize because I don't have my notes with me. I don't remember who said it or from what county. But they did appear to have an understanding after a conversation with Dr. Lever that this might be happening. I don't know when that conversation took place and I don't know if it was the person's perception or if Dr. Lever actually said something that led them to understand that this was, my understanding from it was that, that the monies that were allocated,
Yeah.
That it had been indicated directly that they might not have any additional dollars to allocate in the second and third rounds.
Right.
So.
Well, and I think the other side would be that the state's going to be committed to projects they prior approved would not be giving any planning approvals and
Right.
Because that's committing them beyond, yeah. So we'll wait and see.
Absolutely.
I think we have some options that we would have to apply.
And I bring it up just because I think we need to be understanding of that and be prepared. If that were to happen, you know, what would our next step be? So hopefully it won't, but it is out there.
Yeah. In the past, when we've had an election year, the school construction has requested a recertification or recommitment by, you know, the local, that they're going to provide the local part if the state does theirs. Now, this year, they did not ask for that and they're not, they said they weren't going to. So I don't know if that plays into it or not, but we'll see.
I don't know, but you are correct. We will wait and see what happens. Thank you for the information and I think what you presented is certainly reasonable.
Thank you.
Okay. Therefore then, we are seeking a motion to approve the 16 to 21 capital improvements program for submission to the county commissioners?
I move that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2016, fiscal year 2021 local capital improvements program for submission to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their consideration during the upcoming budget cycle.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is carried. And we move on to our next item, which is also Mr. Clements and Mrs. Howe. And this is regarding the budget amendment.
Yes. As part of the capital improvements program process, county government will, on several occasions, typically in the fall and in the spring, ask us to do what they call a budget sweep. And they ask us to look at our current projects that we have to see if there's any additional funds that could be reverted to what they call their FIN reserve. And it would be either their current year. So this is the FIN 15 reserve. And what that FIN reserve allows is they collect all the funds from the capital improvements programs that are in closeout, process of being finished, or have been completed. It allows them to have a reserve so that if additional funds are needed for another project, for instance, the fire at Spring Ridge Middle School is a prime example of that, or a project that comes in slightly over budget and prices are favorable for the conditions and they need to authorize additional funds, you can go back to and ask for those funds, either county government, or we could do that as we did with Spring Ridge. And they were able to fund that. So we do go through our projects, Mr. Hartwick and I worked closely on that. And due to his due diligence, we are very fortunate based on favorable bidding and his due diligence in project management to be able to come for you today, which we typically do every budget sweep, and have this time 210,187 in projects that are in the process of being closed out to revert back to the county. The projects that we have at this time are the Lenartown Middle School Limited renovation. Project has been very successfully in the process of closing out and been very diligently done. At the project, the point where we are now, we've given some funds back in the past. We have $185 at this time. But every dollar counts. So we'll be reverting $185 back. On the Spring Ridge Middle School state relocatables, the project still has some work to be done. The roofs will be replaced in the spring. Now is not the conducive time to be doing that work. So money has been reserved in our project to do the roof replacement in the spring. But given the favorable bidding and the extensive work that Mr. Hartwick has done, we're still able with all of the state contributions and the county contributions on that project to revert $100,752. It truly is beneficial when the state participates in moving these state units. It does allow us the opportunity to do a lot of work with these units. The Margaret Brett Middle School chiller replacement was completed. Mr. Hartwick has retained some money to $50,000. The project came online right as the heating system was kicking in. So we've retained $50,000 to make sure this summer, when, spring, when we turn the system on, that everything is functional. And when that project is completed out, that funds can revert completely. But at this time, we're able to revert $64,250. And in FY 15, we had been proposing to do the Evergreen Elementary School Early Childhood Center. And we had received $45,000 to start to do some preliminary investigation and design work on that. But as we presented and was just approved, we have swapped that project out for the new elementary school. So what we'll be doing is reverting this money back for the $45,000 that we had gotten to do the original design work, since that project will be done later in time. So altogether in these four projects, it is a total of $210,187 that we are proposing be reverted back to the county's FIN 15 capital reserve project.
All right. Any questions, Mrs. Crosby?
No.
And Mrs. Weaver?
No questions. No questions.
Mrs. Allen?
No questions.
All right. Looking for a motion to approve the transfer from the completed local capital improvements program back to the commissioners of St. Mary's County Reserve.
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approves a transfer of $210,187 from completed local capital improvements program projects to the commissioners of St. Mary's County's reserve capital improvements project account as presented by staff.
I second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion passed.
Thank you.
And our next item is a contract award for relocation and installation of modular units. And this is Mr. Clements and Mr. Hartwick.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The FY 16... The FY two thousand and fifteen state and local CIP budgets included two projects to relocate modular units from the Loveville complex to other school locations. This action item is to relocate two identical state-owned units to George Washington Carver Elementary School. Both of those units are single-room, single-classroom unit. Currently at Carver, there are, there is one two-classroom unit currently in place. The scope of the, the base bid for the project would include replacing the heating and cooling systems in those two state units. We would go ahead and refurbish the interior with new painting and new ceilings. Part of the Carver complex, we installed a, an aluminum canopy, so we'll be extending that canopy. And then finally, we will be kind of restoring the Loveville site by removing concrete footers and, and other items. We did have three alternates as part of this package. One was painting the exterior of the unit, two is replacing the flooring in both units, and third way, we looked at a alternative HVAC system. The project was advertised in E. Maryland Marketplace on October seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Six prospective bidders bought the purchase of bidding documents. Oh, thank you. Four contractors submitted proposals at two o'clock on October thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. As you can see from the exhibit that we provided was the agenda item, the lowest bid was submitted by EMH Environmental Incorporated. They're based in Howard County. EMH has bid previous projects for us, but this would be the first time that we have awarded to them. EMH is a very large company, and they do about fourteen to fifteen million dollars of construction work a year. Within the larger firm, there's a group that specializes in modular units, and they do probably most of the work throughout the state of Maryland. In the last couple of years, they've done nine similar projects for other LEAs in, in Maryland. So they are well-known to us. Their references were great. They're really seen as the very best in, in this type of work. The funding available allows us to select two of the alternates, and you see that at the bottom, that we've selected painting the exterior and replacing the flooring. The alternative HVAC units were quite a bit more expensive, about sixteen thousand dollars, really not a good value for it. You'll see that the spread was the base bid, and those elected alternates is about twelve thousand dollars from EMH Environmental and J&amp;L Services. That's about ten percent. That's truly in the range of what we typically see on a lot of these relocatable projects, especially smaller projects of not high-dollar values. It can be a considerable percentage spread, but we're talking twelve thousand dollars on this, on this project. We're also asking was this action item today that you approve a construction contingency of thirty thousand dollars for unforeseen conditions? So that brings the projects roughly a hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. And you see that the state funding is sixty-six thousand, and then the local fund will pick up the remainder. With that being said, EMH met our bonding requirements. They have a bonding capacity of twenty-five million dollars. Staff therefore recommends contract award to EMH in the amount of a hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. Contract is over a hundred thousand, will have to go to state for their approval, which we expect in January. Work would soon begin after that, and hopefully be completed in the spring of two thousand and fifteen, well in advance of the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. So with that, I'll take your question.
I have some question, or questions.
Mrs. Crosby, any question?
No.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. When you are leasing or running a modular unit, in that lease, they are not responsible for upkeeping the unit, such as you're saying replace the HVAC?
The state, we can't apply for some, some state expenses, but in terms of relocating the unit itself, they will only pay that fifty thousand times the, the state local share. So that thirty-three thousand dollars per unit is all that we could get at this time. We can possibly ask for reimbursement from the state.
Mrs. Weaver, we don't lease any units.
What did she say, lease?
Is that what you were, you were asking?
Lease, or, yeah.
Yeah. We don't lease. All the units, we, either we own or the state owns.
Okay.
And so the ones, these are state-owned units, so they'll participate in moving them, and they will participate, that dollar, the sixty-six, we can use any part of that for replacing the roofs or doing things with them.
Okay.
Outside of that, if we have state units, Mrs. Howell, we could also go back, and they do provide some state money for just regular maintenance. But the state quit buying them, they would like to give the counties their state ones, and says, we don't want anything to do with them, but, but they do still participate in some of that maintenance work and all. And, you know, most of these relocables, the ones that we just spoke of at Spring Ridge, they're in the twenty-five to thirty-year-old range, so when we're replacing them, and we're doing quite a bit to them to bring them up, and if, you know, you see them at Spring Ridge where we moved there, you know, they look great inside, but that's sort of the process, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Washington, you?
I want to thank you for doing a great job with our learning cottages. That's what we call them now, correct?
Right.
And, and they really look great, even though the students aren't in the main building, you know, they look nice, they have carpet in, they're painted, so they feel, they get an opportunity to feel good about their school, even though they're not in the main building. And you do a good job with the walkways and the skirting, all of those things. You do a wonderful job. Now, do these have a toilet in them?
I'm sorry.
Restroom?
No, there is no restroom in these units, so neither of the ones we're moving as part of this action item, nor the one existing that has restrooms.
Well, at least I'm glad that we have them, and we don't have to take a role from a special to put students to use their classrooms. So it's good to have them, than not to have them with or without a restroom. So I'm grateful that we have them, and you make sure they get there and they're in excellent condition. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
There are a lot of teachers who prefer to be in relocatables as opposed to the main building for a variety of reasons. So, you know, it's, we'd like to think that they're temporaries, but some of those temporaries have stayed for a very long time in various locations. But it is the way we and, and a lot of systems across the state and the country deal with spikes and drops in enrollment, especially when building funds are, are tight. I, I appreciate what you've got here, and I also thank you for the additional information that you provided with respect to enrollment and capacity at the, at this location and others. I had, had a conversation with a community member who told me that their understanding and, and their experience was that Carver Elementary enrollment had dropped significantly when McKay's Grocery Store closed, and that because a lot of the people there needed closer access to Grocery Store, that they had moved up toward Lexington Park, and, and the person was quite sure of, of their information, which is why I asked the question. Obviously, from the enrollment numbers you've given, that is not the case. And I think the enrollment numbers clearly, along with capacity, clearly show that there is a need to, to have these units at, at Carver, so thank you for making sure that you do this in a timely fashion so that they will be available for the start of the coming school year, which seems a little odd to be saying, given that we're, you know, just in December, but I'm still trying to figure out where the year went, so. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I certainly support this.
I have one question. The construction contingency of thirty thousand, is that percentage-based? Is that standard, or?
It's based more on experience with these relocatable units. I mean, as part of the project, we're extending utilities to the units, so we have to deal with the infrastructure, existing infrastructure there. And in a lot of cases, you don't know the true condition within the units until they split them apart and you can really see the, the interiors. So it's based on experience.
No, that, that, that's good. I'd much rather have it based on experience than just a flat-line percentage-based or anything like that, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to answer that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Then on to our motion. Oh.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award SMCPS twenty fifteen oh-two DSS DC for the relocation and installation of modular units at George Washington Carver Elementary School in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars to EMH Environmental Incorporated, and further authorize a construction contingency of thirty thousand dollars for the project.
Anyone second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Here on to our next agenda item, which is the contract award for relocation and installation of modular units at Park Hall Elementary School.
Yep. Board members, this action item is to relocate one state-owned unit and one local-owned unit to Park Hall Elementary School. Both of those units are single-room units. With these units, that will bring a total of seven rooms in modular units at Park Hall Elementary School. The local unit that's actually being moved was one that we purchased from Calvert County Public Schools a couple of years ago for five hundred dollars. The unit is in excellent condition with very little need for any interior repairs. The state-owned unit will have interior improvements as, such as those at Carver, painting, all-new lighting in this case, new ceilings. At Park Hall Elementary School, the existing canopy is timber frame, so will basically match the existing canopy. In this project, we had two alternates. Again, one to paint the exterior of the unit, so we kind of give the complex a unified sense to it, and, and the units do need painting. And then we had one other alternate to replace one of the smaller HVAC units in the state-owned unit, state-owned unit. Again, the project was advertised on E. Maryland Marketplace on October seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Six contractors purchased the bidding documents, four contractors submitted proposals at two-thirty P.M. We basically bid this one a half an hour after George Washington Carver. The lowest bid was submitted by J&amp;L Services. J&amp;L Services most recently completed the moving and installation of the state-owned units and restroom unit at Spring Ridge Middle School under a very tight, very difficult timeline. J&amp;L Services also moved that unit, that local unit, from Calvert County Public Schools to the attic, so they're, they're familiar with that particular unit. One final note, J&amp;L Services is a Maryland-certified minority business enterprise. The funds you will see allow us to select both alternates in this case, with those two alternates. J&amp;L Services was considerably less than the second bidder, Blazer Enterprises. It's a pretty sizable difference, about twenty-five percent. I'll note in this, though, at the Spring Ridge Middle School bidding, we saw another descrip, not difference, not discrepancy, of about twenty-five percent. And there is no doubt that J&amp;L Services aggressively priced this bid in relationship to the bidding at George Washington Carver. So just at Spring Ridge, that we were confident that they can do the work for that dollar amount, we're confident that they can do this work at Park Hall Elementary School. Again, based on experience, we like to have a construction contingency of about that same magnitude, thirty thousand, so we are asking for that here. Finally, J&amp;L Services met our bonding requirements once again, and staff therefore recommend contract award to J&amp;L Services in the amount of a hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. This project will follow the same timeline as that of George Washington Carver. Mrs. Allen, take your question.
Okay. Mrs. Crosby?
Has there ever been a time you didn't use the thirty thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah. I mean, usually our, our actual use of contingencies is, is less than we asked for, and that then rolls over in the kind of actions of budget amendments of reverting funds back to, to the county in many cases.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mrs. Weaver?
No questions.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
I do find it interesting that there's, despite the fact that each of these projects will be moving two units,
Yeah.
that the, the one for Park Hall came in ten thousand dollars less than the bid, the successful bid at, for Carver, and that the EMH bid for this one was so much different than the EMH bid for Carver.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on why that?
Well, one, I think, again, the, the level of improvements that we need to make in the local unit at Park Hall is considerably less than what has to be done with those state units at Carver, so that's, that's probably the, the main difference.
Okay.
The other is, we are using a timber frame canopy, matching that at, at Park Hall. J&amp;L Services has their own carpenters. They, they basically can do that work in-house, so I think those are the major differences. And on bid days, there's weird psychologies. I mean, and I think EMH, in hindsight, came into the first bid. They had, as I noted, they've never been low bidder before.
Right.
And J&amp;L Services, Blazer and Hatch, have bid against EMH a number of times. At Park Hall Elementary School, a half an hour later, there's no, there's no doubt in my mind, the J&amp;L Services gave a very aggressive bid on this, but I think a fair bid, no question about it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right. If anyone has any further questions, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award, I'm going to write one, SMCPS twenty fifteen oh-three DSS DC for the relocation and installation of modular units at Park Hall Elementary School in the amount of a hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars to J&amp;L Services Incorporated, and further authorizes a construction contingency of thirty thousand dollars for the project.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
And then our next item is simply informational items. First is Ms. Tracy Hyble regarding the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan.
Board Docs to the SMCPS website, and once there, pull up the presentation for the informational item by Mrs. Hyble about the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan, and there it is. Ta-da.
After it leaves.
The presentation is a lot shorter than the actual plan. The presentation is a lot shorter than the actual plan. So, good morning, board members.
Good morning.
Back in 2002, the Maryland General Assembly enacted the Bridge to Excellence in Public Schools Act. And what this did for all LEAs in Maryland was to significantly improve, increase the amount of state funding that was received by each LEA, but it also required that a comprehensive master plan be created and updated annually. And the purpose of the master plan is ultimately to link school finance directly to instructional initiatives and programs. In 2010, when Maryland received the Race to the Top Education Grant, the local scopes of work, which are the, which are the work that centered around the Race to the Top Assurances, those were integrated into the master plan as well. So, the four Race to the Top Assurances that the work is centered around are standards and assessments, data systems that support instruction, great teachers and leaders, and turning around lowest-performing schools. And thankfully, by all Race to the Top criteria, we don't have any lowest-performing schools to turn around, so that's a good thing. The master plan document begins with an executive summary that's reflective of really the depth behind it in the rest of the document. It's, the executive summary summarizes the progress and challenges from 2014. The sections behind it, as I said, B through E, provide additional in-depth information about our work in these areas. The master plan, as I referenced a moment ago, is a 274-page document. I fear, Mrs. Bailey, that if this is your first day of school, I might be giving you a textbook.
I am.
Lots of people contributed to it through our instructional division, and I do want to send a special recognition and appreciation out to Ms. Kim Short, who was, is Mr. Smith's administrative assistant, and she patiently assembled this entire document. It was quite a piece of work. The plan itself actually was assembled over five months. The beginning of the plan started in the summer with the submission of the Race to the Top compliance documents to the state and the grant application for our title monies as well as our fine arts grant from the state. That happened in the summer. In the fall, goal progress was compiled by our school system, the Race to the Top closeout process was completed, the grant applications approved were all compiled to form the document that we have before us today. And the plan was submitted in October. At a couple points in the process, Maryland State Department of Education has a team of technical reviewers look over our submissions to date, and they were for the presence of all required elements, and this was done at two points during the development of the plan. Clarifying questions were returned to us when more information was needed. We only got a few of those, so we felt that we were very successful, because in November, our final plan was approved. The contents of the executive summary and the subsequent body of the master plan includes an update on the status of our educational pathways, and these include the Signature Academies, Fairlead Academy, as well as the Charter School. An update about technology enhancements for Performance Matters, Hack and Tac Systems, all those instructional data systems at the heart of the classroom is also included, as are a summary of our fiscal situation in 2014, and then goal progress in a number of academic areas. And the goal progress that we write about and provide data for include the Race to the Top scopes of work, core academic content areas. We monitor specific student groups ongoing, and those student groups are the English language learners, farm students, African-American male subgroup, and our special education population. Also included in this portion of the plan is an update on the status and progress of our special programs, which include education that is multicultural, career and technology education, early learning programs, as well as our gifted and talented programs. The Race to the Top Assurances, again, are kind of the very umbrella under which we hang or categorize all of this academic progress. And there are several specific accomplishments and projects that we worked on that pertain directly to the assurances, so I just want to point those out. Under great teachers and leaders, the inclusion of student growth as a component for all administrator and teacher evaluation processes. The second one is graduation dropout and attendance rates, which of course vary by year, and form extreme amounts of focus, that's an extreme place of focus at the high school level. Data systems to support instruction, one of our biggest projects, we write a lot about it in here, is the strengthening of our wireless capacity across, across the school system to increase the use of advanced educational technology such as video streaming, Moodle, discovery education products, and eventually, online testing. So, moving forward into school year 15, we do have fully integrated and online now, student achievement is, has a firm foothold and an established pathway into our teacher and administrator evaluation processes at all levels. We're bringing on the park assessments this year in grades three through eight, Algebra I, Algebra II, and English X, and that is a mammoth undertaking that is reflective of all the curriculum shifts that have taken place over the last few years under Race to the Top. And finally, in 14, in the 2014, we did close up and expend all remaining Race to the Top funds. So, at this point, as we move forward, any further curriculum needs and the like will be funded by the school system. So, I would have to say, although it is textbook in size for you, it, the master plan, it's a really comprehensive blueprint of the fiscal and instructional programs here in the St. Mary's County Public Schools, so I hope that you look forward to it.
I'll break it up.
I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
That's very good, thank you.
All right, any comments? Sarita?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Mrs. Crowe?
Very good, I have some master plans if I'm in my study. You know what I should do, I should compare them and make sure that there aren't any repetitions on the pages. I'm pulling your leg in the.
I actually, I had compared them as part of my work for Mr. Smith, and really, our focus areas are all the same, you'll see it, our focus, our subgroups that we monitor, the progress of the academies and things, but every year, there's always something new and interesting, so you'll find that.
Well, I just, the reason I asked, the budget, I mean, the old budgets, like 210 and probably before you were born. If you went through them, and I was always, okay, all right, yeah, I'd go through them and I would find that class size, that's what I was always looking for, the same thing, and I'd say, it's the same thing it said in the other one. That's what I was getting. Now you gotta worry about me going home comparing. Don't worry about it, I don't even have time.
Mrs. Weaver?
I don't have any questions right now, but definitely after I've had the opportunity during my free time to go through all that, I will definitely give you a call.
Start with the executive summary, if I could recommend, and it really does give a lot of interesting information. I was given the privilege of reading the master plan cover to cover for a number of years now, but especially this year, and I did feel that it was an extremely worthwhile use of my time, and after all my time in the system, I even learned a few new things, so I thought it was very worthwhile.
Even you, that's good.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
Actually, it is very good reading, and you know, the amount of work that it took to put it together is really worthy of reading, so thank you very much.
It is a daunting size to a document, but they have been longer in the past, so I guess I should be happy that, you know, they've, they've been pared down a bit. And I do, I do understand that it is quite an undertaking to pull all this together. At the same time, it is really helpful to be able to understand where the money is going and the programs it's being spent on and the people it's being spent on. And I think sometimes the size of the document and the name of it sometimes causes people to not understand exactly what a seminal document this is for the school system.
It was a staggering amount of collaboration that was required, and you really do see clearly here how a decision that's made for a teacher or by a teacher in a school system has its little, has its tendrils in all the way up to finance through TLPD, through supporting services. It really is quite informative.
Thank you very much for taking the time to put it together.
Thank you. Thank you for the.
If I may, Mrs. Bailey.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Just, you did reference Ms. Short, and God bless the woman, because what has to happen is she has to gather the submission from every single supervisor and every single, and the guidance each year changes. This was originally tethered to Thornton Funding, which was No Child Left Behind, which was AYP, and then it became midstream, Race to the Top, and then it was Annual Measurable Objectives, and then it was Scopes of Work. So, this is, it's become quite a monster. We've given away nothing and added perpetually. But the people who work on this, especially the people who spend the time to stitch it all together, that's really fantastic work. And I do want to publicly thank Ms. Short, I do want to thank certainly all of the supervisors in TLPD and Dr. Marr and Division of Instruction and the Finance Group as well for relentlessly going after all of these C-125s and all of this documentation, and everything has to be signed, just the right thing, in blue ink and not printed on the back. And then finally, Mrs. Hyble, thank you very much for stitching it all together.
Thank you.
So, just, it's a lovely thing to be done.
And I think it's also worth noting that this document actually was set out, the initial one was set out in law as Thornton came forward. So, this was, I believe, mandated by the legislature and is now in comar. So, it's, it's not just a, the MSD saying, we want this document, this is, they want the accountability measure that this provides, and I think that's an important aspect, so thank you.
Okay. And our next item is the Fiscal Year 2015 November Financial Report, Ms. Tammy McCourt.
And with any luck, I didn't have to go through board docs. So, before you, is the November 30th Financial Report for St. Mary's County Public Schools. Let me minimize this so we can see it all on one screen. For the month of, as of the end of November, we've received $92.3 million, of which $44.1 million was local revenues, $48.2 million state revenues, and $29,000 federal revenues. Of particular note, the third line on here is the county appropriation to state pension. We just made our first half of the pension payment of $1.7 million. The county government provides us reimbursement of that, so we expect to receive that any day now, and that will be reflected on your November report. On the expenditure side, of particular note, about halfway down the screen is the transfers, and that is for non-public placements. That is in the negative currently as a projection only of $425,000. If you'll note, we have, we do provide projections or encumbrances for any current placements, so we are reflecting a $1.3 million encumbrance, so our true expense to date is about $500,000. At this point, there is sufficient funds within the special education category, and it is in a positive posture on categorical basis of $503,000. We do anticipate any budget adjustment will be needed, we are looking at doing that perhaps in the March timeframe, we'll continue to monitor this account as necessary. We will be getting additional state funding towards that overage, however, the state funding is approximately one quarter of that amount, so we're anticipating that to be about One additional note I'd like to point out is that this does include the re-categorization of the Chesapeake Charter School as you approved at your last board meeting, however, it has been forwarded on to the Board of County Commissioners and is pending their final approval. Overall, on the expenditure side, your due date encumbrance and expenditures are $171 million. Are there any questions?
Starting at the end. Sarita, any questions?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Mrs. Crowe?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
Mrs. Weaver?
You said that you're gonna update in March with the expenditures?
If there is any necessary budget adjustment at that time for special education, we're looking at, well, obviously, continue to monitor, and if necessary, we'll come back in the spring, March.
So, it won't be just a big surprise at the end, so we're.
It's not a big surprise, and that's why we start pointing out to you now.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, no questions or comments.
Mrs. Allen?
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, the next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, January 14, 2015. Correction to the agenda, at 9:00 AM. And next we meet.
With that, the meeting is adjourned.
With that meeting is adjourned? Oh, wait.
Come on, you're gonna use the gavel.
There you go.